Let us call the...
Yeah, on the other piece.
Excuse me. Can we call the commission meeting of June 5th, regular commission meeting, to order? We need an alternate, and we have an alternate.
All right. Are we good with five? Are we enough with five?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Jackie will replace who's missing, Kevin.
Sure, or Donna.
Or Donna. Donna might come, but Kevin I know is not coming. He's still in the commission, but anyway. So we've appointed the alternates. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes of May 15. Anybody have any comments or corrections in that?
The only thing that I had noticed, it's gonna take forever, is at the very end, we have the motion where we did not approve the reasons. I felt like the fire reason was a little, could have been elaborated on a little bit in the minutes, you know.
Well, it's either that's what the motion is or not.
Yeah, I guess, okay, I guess, I thought we had sort of, I guess we didn't really.
That was what was in the motion.
Oh, okay.
That was.
Fine, okay, then.
I think it's, well, it's clear what it said.
Yeah.
To me.
This is a clear statement, but I think it fails to indicate where the easement, what easement? Easement for what? And the point of the easement was the easement has to do with a state-owned.
Lack of an easement, they didn't have an easement.
Right, but the point is, lack of an easement. Should have indicated where's the easement.
The motion didn't indicate specific easement. Again, that was a perpatum take of the motion.
It's a voice transcript, a voice tape recording?
There's a video.
I don't think it's adequate, I don't think a judge is gonna...
Okay.
This thing is gonna end up in front of a judge, he's gonna look at that and he's gonna say.
Well, it won't unless the vessel people decide to go through with the attorney's threat that they're gonna sue us.
They did.
They did?
I'll provide an update.
It was in the paper, huh?
Later in the evening.
Pardon?
I'll provide an update later in the evening.
Okay, but it was in the paper yesterday. So, they have sued us. Anybody have any other comments? I thought they were remarkably good for...
Yeah, there was a lot, yeah, yeah.
I liked the way he outlined this time, too.
Did I have a motion to approve them?
I'm over approval as they were submitted.
Thank you, Bruce.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here.
You can still vote, we found out. If you wanna vote, you can abstain or vote.
I'm gonna abstain.
You watched the meeting on...
I read the minutes.
You read the minutes, you're prepared.
Okay, you can abstain. Passes four to nothing with one abstention. Thank you. Next order of business is a public hearing, and since Kevin's in Maine, I will read the call. It's application ZC 23-21 of GPF Drake Hill LLC, owner Niraj Gupta, applicant for a special exception pursuant to section 8.6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to permit a 1,187 square foot liquor store in the Simsbury center zone at 710 Hop Meadow Street, or 712 Hop Meadow Street, assessors map G10 block 227 lot 001 plus 2. Okay. Is there someone here to present the application?
Mr. Gupta is here.
Now, our public hearings have been so popular lately, I'm just so surprised.
Thank you for having me, my name's Niraj Gupta, I'm the owner of Harvest Wine and Spirits. We're applying to have a full package store, a liquor store, in the plaza next to Fitzgerald. We currently have multiple locations in West Hartford, they're very well rated, super nice build-outs, very high quality, so we intend on bringing the same service to Simsbury. We specialize in esoteric, unique products, customer service, and like a really good atmosphere for a store, so I think that's kind of it.
The location, just if I could help, is the form Madison, Matt?
Right.
Madison.
Anyway, anybody have some comments or questions of the applicant? From the commission?
Question for George.
Sure.
How many liquor stores do we currently have?
In town, do you remember?
I believe we have seven, so we looked at the state website, consumer protection, there's one available, I believe.
Oh, okay.
We have eight available, and there's seven currently.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna ask the exact same question.
Okay, good.
I was thinking, seemed to have a lot.
I knew there was a limit, that's all.
Well, the statute says it's one per 2,500 residents, so the calculations are all based on one twenty, per 2,500 residents.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? There was a liquor store, Maguire's was there years ago.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's mentioned in...
And I, apparently, we can't find any...
Perhaps, but we could not find a recording of it, or anything in the clerk's office to suggest that it had received a special exception, because we thought it'd be better to be clean, and we'll make sure that it gets recorded properly.
So at least two of us that were in there.
There could already be.
There, but he was in tariff, though.
He did, he moved there.
We tied.
Got it.
Moved there, yeah.
Got it.
Anyway, does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Pavish, I'm from West Street Wines and Spirits, 131 on West Street, and to keep things accurate, there are eight stores.
Currently?
Currently. Myself, West Street Signature, which is the old bottle shop, Valley Wines and Spirits, Wine etc., which is now in Simsbury Town shops, Liquor Depot on 44, still in Simsbury, Wine House, north side of town, Teaville, and Town Line. And my concern about this is clocking the proximity from the south to the north side of town, right now, if you're starting at the southernmost store, that would be Signature, where the old bottle shop, northernmost would be Wine etc. With an addition of another store, that would be four within one mile stretch. Now, that might not be the issue this evening, that's up to you to decide. I'm another half mile out of there, so I was thinking, like, within the center district as it stands now, there are three, in this case possibly four or five, within walking distance of, say, one West Street, and I don't know how heavily that weighs in, it was actually pointed out that there is provisions for license every 2,500 citizens, so there is room for a ninth store. I think, in the past, I've, I've been around 28 years, I recall Chris McGuire's store, that was in the site that is now Hans Nails, I believe, so I've been around as long as anybody, I hesitate to say. But again, my concern is the proximity of too many stores in the center district. I understand that there's stress on retail, there's also stress on some of the people who are running almost sole proprietorships themselves, I question why they're not here this evening, maybe things will get more involved, maybe they will not, but I would say out of the eight stores, I had read in the media at various times over the last year that at least three of them are under some degree of financial stress. Now, I know it's not your game to pick winners or losers, but it is your idea for, to make sure that land is used responsibly. As far as four stores being on Route 10, I don't really know of any other retail type that has that type, I can't name four of anything on Route 10 within that stretch besides maybe banks, you know, okay, so, that's something to, to consider. These people also, like I said, almost stress businesses, are family businesses, they're also going up against higher tax rates this period of time, too. Don't know if that's an issue or not, but I thought I would make my point, try to make myself clear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other people in the public here to speak to this application? Any other comments from commissioners?
I guess my comment would be, it sounds like we have new information.
We reviewed the state website, that we had, I think there's one available.
Okay.
Well, there's also, as you probably remember, about three years ago, two years ago, Tom Evans came in, and he gave, we approved a liquor store for him down there on the corner with Talcott Acres condo, he owns that house that's about to fall over. Every time I drive by, I think, when is it gonna fall over? I guess it's not, but there's no liquor store there.
Right.
So I think it's safe to assume that he didn't apply for the liquor license, although we approved it. So is it forever approved as a site for a liquor store? They don't have to come back here again?
So the answer is yes, the special exception applies, yes, but I would suggest that if he, if he were to come in to, to the department to try to pull a permit for the use, we wouldn't sign the permit, because we work with the state licensing, and they'd say we have, we already have eight located there, as part of this.
The state would have to...
Yeah, so we sign off.
If he went to the state, the state would say there's already...
Yes, correct.
There's none available.
Not available at this point.
Too bad for him, but there is this, an issue of the date of the census that the state is gonna use when they make the calculation, they don't change it every two weeks when we find some more people move to Simsbury, that doesn't change the number.
Right, I'm not sure how often the DCP updates that number.
Well, the statute calls for relying on the census, it's done every 10 years. I've forgotten now if it's a federal census, or does the state use, do something in the way of the census?
Twenty-point population numbers have been released, so that, that number exists.
Yeah, but my point is that...
You should have increased.
That's it? That's all the excitement?
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I will move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Haring's five to zero, no abstentions. Okay, we've closed the public hearing. Next order of business?
It may make sense simply to, to finish this item up, Mr. Chair.
It's not on our...
Yeah, we just included it as a single...
Okay. Can I have a motion to take up consideration of application ZC 23-21? I'll approve that.
I mean, I'll, I'll make that motion, yeah.
I will second it.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can take it up. All right, thank you, everybody. Comments?
Well, I, I agree with the comment I had thought about, and again, I, no objection in theory, but I did, just as I was coming down, I'm like counting as I'm going, like within a mile, we already have three package stores. You know, I mean, it would be nice to be able to, as you come out of Fitzgerald, run over and grab something, and I definitely see the appeal to that, but I just don't know if we have, if that's what we wanna do, I don't know, I'm just, it gives me pause.
Same. I agree with...
I agree, Jim. It's unfortunate, I would like to support the businesses, but we also have to support our existing businesses.
Well, I would call attention to the discussion we had when Evans asked for approval of the one down in the south end of town, and I pointed out the number of liquor stores we had on Route 10, and the proximity of that location to the next one down, which is over the Town Line, it's in Ava, but it's only, I mean, if you stood in the road, you can almost see that liquor store in Ava, but the vote on that liquor store down there was five to one, I was the only one who dissented based on that information, no one else did. So I'm concerned that, you know, not be locked into precedent that we should be looking and weighting very heavily the number of liquor stores that exist in some proximity to where the application is for, because, I don't know how far back we've been debating or deliberating in the zoning commission on liquor stores, but I don't think it's in concrete anywhere that you have to look at, or even should be looking at, the density in the town, that's the state's job, and the statute doesn't provide any guidance on distance between them, so, I don't know.
Well, there is, you know, I mean, the market, to some extent, takes care of those things, and it's a difficult thing for us to try to impose market-based decisions, but it's whether or not, I think what our role is, is to determine whether that's a safe place, and whether it fits in the community, not whether it's a good business decision or impacting somebody else, but that's...
It's not even necessarily, well, I guess you're right, I mean, it's not necessarily impacting, although that is certainly a factor, it's just, do we want some diversity of development, or do we just want a bunch of package stores up and down the road, you know, that's all.
If we look at our tax bill...
That's true, that's true, that's normally my, my precedent, that's normally my...
We wanna look at things that are adding to the grand list at this point, but, but anyway. Public hearing's been closed.
I didn't...
Okay.
I think, yeah, not to belabor it, but the owner of the building is the one who's making the judgment relative to the business decision here, and knowing what the competition is for that particular use, they could have left it vacant, but there has been a liquor store in that building.
Yes.
In the past, Maguire's, I don't know what the years they were, but I have this recollection of the liquor store being there, as do others, so there's no doubt there's been a liquor store there before, and if you count how many there are, and how, the proximity is, I don't know that it was much different when Maguire's was there, but, you know, maybe it was three instead of four, or whatever. West Street Liquor Store's been there for a long time, the last one, Louis Market had a liquor store, you know, Greg and Donuts is down there now, that's gone, so I think if you, you know, pick a time period and just start marking off how many were here, it's not that much different today than it's ever been, but...
Yeah. Mr. George, is there parking affiliated with this spot?
It's a long time tenant space, it's part of the entire Fitzgerald.
So there's adequate, okay.
Just like there would be any of those tenant spaces.
Dave had mentioned safety, so I just thought that's something, too, and now with Lionstone right there, they kind of designated a couple of the front spots.
Yes, I think they must have worked with the landlord to do that.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking it through, as far as people coming in and out, right, this is typically a quick type of business.
Okay, well, I think we should oppose the motion and decide it. Somebody wanna make this motion?
I will make the motion. I move, I guess, I move to approve application ZC number 23-21 of GPF Drake Hill LLC, owner Niraj Gupta, applicant for a special exception pursuant to section 8.6 of the Simsbury zoning regulations to permit a plus or minus 1,187 square foot liquor store in Simsbury center zone, one at 710 Hop Meadow Street, aka 712 Hop Meadow Street, assessors map G10 block 227 lot 001 plus 2 SC zone. The commission finds that the application for a special exception has met the standards set in section 12, special exception requirements of the Simsbury zoning regulations, subject to the following condition, an administrative zoning permit is required for interior construction.
Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded who? Ann? Okay, Ann seconded it, okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We got four.
Opposed.
Four to one, Haring's. Okay. Okay, the next... Next order of business is application ZC 23-18 of Dorset Crossing LLC, owner David Zax, applicant for modification to Dorset Crossing, pad master plan pursuant to section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations, at 30 Dorset Crossing, assessors map 104 block 403 lot 013-A.
Mr. Chair, I was just, just to kind of bring you back, if you remember at your May 15th meeting, this is a preliminary review of a master plan and zone change, so you referred that out to your planning commission, and your design review commission, and conservation commission, and then we come back with kind of general comments, and then you can kind of provide your own preliminary review of the applicant's proposal, and you decide whether or not you wanna set it for a public hearing for the formal master plan in July at this point, so, very, very limited comments from, from the three groups we spoke with, the conservation commission just recommended to the applicant to make sure that they deal with invasive species, and make sure they plant native plants as part of their landscape design. Planning commission recommended that the applicant make a clear commitment to affordable units as part of, as part of the proposal. And design review, we just heard from, recommended they incorporate elements of Simsbury, right notes where, what else did they say? It happened 10 minutes ago.
It was architecture, architecture, architecture.
It was, it was, yeah, so it includes small town colonial, maybe a little bit too much, maybe not include as much white colors and flavors as the existing Dorset Crossing. Alka brought up, you're just be careful about getting rid of too much retail bricks and mortar for the future, we still may need some of that in our community, and also include a focal point, if you could, as part of your design, so that's, that's what design review spoke of, and again, design review didn't really have, you know, we don't have elevations or anything like this, it's just a master conceptual plan, so those were kind of just big picture topics that they recommended to the applicant.
Okay. You guys gonna...
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair. Good evening, my name's Dave Zax, I'm a professional engineer with F.A. Hesketh who represent any applicant, Tom Fahey, legal counsel is here as well. So we, as George pointed out, we went to the three commissions, requested for informal discussions, and I think everybody's, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna say it's neutral to positive kind of comments that we received from them, we listened to what you folks said a few weeks ago when we were over at the library, and I'm pleased to say that we've discussed that, and as far as with the affordable component, we will be making a commitment to 10% affordable units, following the general state statutes, we'll work that out with staff as to what that all means, but that's the commitment we would be making. I think, you know, as we discussed before, adding that to the 48 units that are already on the site, with the special needs, the, you know, that would bring us up to 58 plus 48, there's 56 units of affordable housing at Dorset Crossing, so I think that does pretty well towards the goals that the town is starting to formulate for new developments as we move forward, and so that's where we are, we're here this evening to ask you to go ahead and set the public hearing and make it official, and we can discuss all the issues with a full presentation at the public hearing with the public in July.
Okay. Comments, commissioners?
So your, your thought is that somehow the public hearing would be scheduled to discuss the material that's already been submitted to us?
Basically, it would be, it would be an official application at that point, yes, yeah, of the public hearing.
Where does the commitment to the 10%?
Well, we're, we're making a public statement this evening, and we'll amend our application in the next...
So you're gonna amend the application before the public hearing?
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, by the end of this week, even.
Yeah, remember, Mr. Chair, because this is in a pad zone, it requires the two-step, kind of the two-step process.
Yeah.
I'm aware of that, yes, I was just concerned as to when does this get to a piece of paper that we can say...
Yeah, no, we'll make it official into the application, yes, sir.
We've had other issues in town with...
No, I, yeah.
Reluctant to accept...
Yes.
You know, good faith isn't as good as it used to be.
I, yeah, I'm from West Haven, we don't trust good faith, so, you know.
Okay, no comments about West Haven.
So, when you say affordable, are these going to be below market rate?
They'll meet the, they'll meet the criteria, the calculations, establishing the rents, you know, based on state's criteria for, to set the affordability, yeah.
Are they going to be deed restricted?
Yeah, they're gonna have to be under the state's statute, it's long-term deeds, it's a long-term process.
Well, let me just ask, you know, when you talk about 72 units and 10%, what are you talking about, seven units, or are you talking about eight?
I think the state makes a roundup, it's probably eight, yeah.
Okay.
What does that make your total percentage in that development then, with all the apartments you have?
Well, there's, there's, there's 48 at O'Jakean, so 48 plus eight is 56 out of 320, I think the number would be? Yeah, I think that's the number, be 312 units.
So it's about half of the 30% rate that the state mandates?
Well, the state's, the state's minimum mandate is 10%, 30% if you wanna do 830G, which we're not proposing any 830G here, this would be straightforward application with it.
Right.
Since you folks are doing this by master plan, you can lock these numbers in.
It's something over 10%, you're missing something here, it's something over 10%.
Okay.
Because the 48 was more than...
They're out of that, right.
And now when you add on 48 more there, it's something past 10%.
So, yes, your overall will be over.
Yeah.
So, just because I wasn't here at the last meeting, so we're only talking about...
Oh, George, could you, yeah, it's the front, it's the front...
Three 24-unit buildings.
Yeah, it's right in this spot, right here, three 24-unit buildings, right in this location, right here.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's happening in the rear?
Everything's, this is developed, these units are here, O'Jakean's here, and then these two you guys approved last year.
Right.
They're working their way through their final financing to move forward.
So those are coming?
They're coming.
Okay, just asking, because we're talking about all of this.
And then the, the ones that we approved last year, is there any affordable component to those?
No, those were straight market rate.
Kings, is that what that's called?
It's called Crown Point.
Crown, okay.
I think they're gonna change the name again, but...
Thank you.
I'll be just happy to see it go, I don't care what they call it.
Right, understand, understand. So I know we're talking...
Remember, though, those units, the little difference there was that was already approved for 72 units.
Yep.
You know, back in the master plan days, this is, the change we're doing here, these are 72.
New units.
Yep.
Right, a little, a little different.
Replacing some of what was gonna be commercial?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask, I know we're not really talking about the retail at this time, but I'm curious, is there any progression on the retail aspect of it?
You know, as I pointed out to the design review, we talked a little bit about that, in this, in this front lot right here, if you recall, there was a 14,000 square foot building, was meant to be Walgreens, and was designed exclusively for them, they backed out a number of years ago, it's been marketed to all the different drug chains, no one's interested, it's just a different world today in their market. Then, the, the original 15,000 square foot medical center was built, and that's down to like 20 or 25% occupancy, as hard as they've tried to find more medical uses, so that, as part of this proposal, we're, we're gonna switch that from exclusive medical use to a mixed use, allow retail and stuff, to try to, try to, you know, add some more there and fill that building up.
So that right now, the focus is supposed to be medical, so, is that, is that right?
Yeah, right now it's restricted to medical by the pad, we wanna make it medical plus, you know, retail, and fill that building up, and then we redesigned this front corner to break it up into two smaller buildings, which is a... which is attractive today to, you know, to try to get some attention, you know, for smaller retail uses or maybe even a little, maybe a small medical walk-in center or something like that that isn't interested in the big 15,000 square foot building, something like that. So that's, this was an opportunity to get rid of the 14,000 square foot pharmacy building that's just been sitting there forever, you know. So, you know, I think, you know, the whole point of this is that along Route 10 is you've got your retail office component that kind of mixes in nicely with the small, you know, buildings across the street and as things develop. So, you know, and then the retail, the residential's tucked further back into the site. And as you heard Dr. George ago last month, I mean, you know, he's been preaching for 10 years, you know, and had, has had, I don't know, it seems to me like he's had every commercial broker on this project at one point or another and working on it to try to find tenants. And they're just, they're just not there, you know, it's not for lack of trying. And, you know, we joked about it last time with me, I've been on this site since 2004, you know, and it's, you know, so I think this is, this is a mix that definitely will be, you know, well-received in today's world and we can, we can get this project filled up and healthy and move on, you know.
You see, they're not there, but you kind of just went down the road.
They did, they, they looked at this, they passed.
Okay.
So they wanted to be in the center of town.
Now, is this, this is retail, but it wouldn't be professional office then?
It might. It could be professional office still, but we thought it would be wise at this point to add the retail component to that 15,000 square foot building to give it a chance to fill up, you know.
Okay, but it could be, it could be either.
It could be either one or a split, probably will, probably be a split.
I wonder if the sidewalks would help make it more.
Yeah, I mean, it's exciting, the fact that they're putting the sidewalks down Route 10 finally after all the years of talking about it. This is a nice little walk down to Big Y, across the street to the restaurants and things across the street.
Years ago.
And then we got the big piece, the big enchilada's south of us.
Yes.
That between, between the skating center and us, that's, that's, that's the ballgame up here someday.
Oh, yeah.
That's where all the, that's, that's.
I don't know, I'm hearing there's techniques coming for tobacco to come back. So, I don't know, I thought that that was still owned by the company that was, yeah, some related company.
It's owned by Indus, you know, it's owned by, it used to be Colrow and then Land and now Indus.
Well, I'm not advocating for tobacco, but, yeah. I have another follow-up sort of question that, in George's comments to the, in a memo to the commission, it sort of follows on one of these other organizations that we got a quick oral report on here, raises a question, I think I heard something about the nature of the apartment units being considered. And I know your, the proposal that we have, the only one we have, calls for studio one and two-bedroom apartments in the 74, 72 or 74 units. And so George's comment was, are townhomes, flats, stacked units and other offerings distinct from three-story garden apartments available for consideration?
Definitely.
So.
72 units or something.
So my question is, when is that discussion?
This fits comfortably, this, this type of development fits as a massing exercise. How many units, how much parking could you get? I don't see anybody putting more than 72 units here, whether it's townhouses or flats or whatever, but this is, these are buildings that we have built, I'm comfortable with them, I know they fit and that's why we think we want the master plan. Rather than just drawing some arbitrary box that really doesn't mean anything, you know, this is actually a development that could work on this property. Somebody could walk in here with a site plan after, if you folks approve a master plan, they could walk in here with a site plan that looks exactly like that if they, if they chose, if they want to do flats or they want to go to townhouses or something like that, as long as it doesn't exceed 72 units, that's something you guys could entertain at that time. But this is, from a master planning point of view, all of the boxes that I have shown here are practical, they work, it gives you a good look at what a massing, I call it a massing plan more so than anything else. I don't see anything bigger than 72 units coming, coming on these, on these properties.
And that was, really was, I just was curious as to whether the studio, one bedroom, the two bedroom were, and your answer is no.
No.
Still an open.
Yes, definitely part of the planning process.
Right. The only thing that's locked in is the 72.
Yeah, the density basically.
Seven, eight times 24, yeah, okay.
So when we set a public hearing date, we have to have a motion, a public hearing text?
No, so think of this as a zone change, a zone change application. I think you can just recommend we set a public hearing on the master plan and zone change for July 17th. Remember, it's the two pieces you done, your preliminary, now needs to go to formal. They'll update their application and then we'll take it, just like you would have a zone change application. So we don't do text, we don't do language for that. The zone change would be a master plan, public hearing for a master plan and zone change at 30 Dorset Crossing.
And at that point, we'd have all the drawings that we.
Yes, that's right.
I'm comfortable with that, how about you?
I am. And the only comment that I would have, is I would ask George, in your notes that you gave us on this, under number two, it says, staff recommends the applicant consider an affordable housing pledge. And I know they've pledged it, however, do we think that our notes and your recommendation should be stronger than considers?
So what, so, no, I don't think you need to, because what you'll see in the staff report, I suspect, for July 17th, is some draft conditions of approval that clearly memorialize what percentage, how many, at what, below market rate. That will be in a draft condition of approval, I suspect. So you won't need to do that. You'll have to decide whether you're satisfied with what we've drafted, but that's what we'll do. You'll see that as part of the staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Including, Ms. Madison's question about what, what percentage, 80% or 60% of median income, so we'll work through that.
Now, what does the state statute say with respect to a 10%? Does that have to be half, 60%?
State statute is 30% and then they break it into 50% at 60% of median income.
Right.
Half, the other half at 80%. Period of 40 years, and deed restricted.
We're talking about a commitment that he's making of 10%. Does that mean 10%, there'll be 5% at 80% and 5% at 60%?
Sounds like that's what the applicant's proposal is, so yes.
But the 10% is identified as a minimum.
Yes.
Yes. So before we take final action, we might want to think about whether that minimum is sufficient. We're not obligated to 10%.
Right.
Well, the state law is what it is, the statute says a minimum of 10%.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Yeah.
Mr. Zax, are these going to have an elevator for their three-story?
At this point, I wouldn't get bogged down in those details, you know, that are.
Well, the next meeting we're having, right, is to look at renderings or no?
No.
That's not.
Master plan.
Okay.
Just like what we have approved right now.
Okay. To explain why, because.
But we're, we have to come back for.
Understand.
Full-blown site plan, so.
Because staff had asked about diverse, right, and we have gotten that feedback in town that we need to have inclusive type of housing, so I just want to bring that up. Thank you. Accessible.
Sure. Well, definitely, the site will be 100% accessible, you know, as, as far as the first floor of the buildings.
Right.
How you get up to the upper floors, that's something to be discussed later, but, you know, but we only design our sites 100% accessible, not this little piece over here and then this little, I, no. Our, our residential developments are 100% accessible.
But you have, I would imagine the, the O'Jakin, I forget if that's the right pronunciation, that building is accessible.
Oh, that has, yeah, that has, it has two, I think it has one for emergency purposes and one for.
Bruce, Dorset Crossing is not. Those are not accessible.
Those are garden, those are garden apartments.
But neither are the ones that our friends are building down there on, you know, on the south end of town, that are still under, not, not the Silverman guys, Chris Nelson and his partner on Powder Forest down in there. Those don't have elevators, the luxury apartments, no.
Yeah, but the question is, the current buildings that are there, I heard two different things. One, you said they're all accessible and somebody else said, no, they're not.
Well, I think he's saying about the O'Jakin building specifically.
No, O'Jakin building, but I'm talking about the other buildings that are there, Dorset Crossing buildings.
They're, they're garden-style apartments, so you have to walk up to the upper floors.
Correct, but you were saying, I thought.
What I'm saying is the site, the site itself is 100% accessible by grading and things of that nature. So there's not like areas of the site that someone who needs accessibility can't go to, you know. You still see that today. I don't know why, but I see it on new sites occasionally. Our sites, the way we design them is no matter where you walk on this property, it is an accessible route, so there's no limitations.
Okay.
And then all the buildings are accessible from, at least at the first floor, then you talk about the rest of the building.
Okay, you were talking about outside on the first floor.
Right, which is.
Not anymore.
I was talking about, correct, thank you.
Yeah, to me, it's equally important as a designer that, you know, we don't pigeonhole pieces of the property that it's accessible here, but it's not accessible here because the grades are too steep or there's stairs or whatever. We design the sites, you can go anywhere on the site, no limitations.
Well, not to belabor, but when we approved Barber Cove, which hasn't started yet, but I understand they're getting closer, but there's no elevators in that development either.
No, but those are townhomes, so they're individual units that people will be walking up. That's, it's totally different. These are one-bedroom or lofts. You would expect that there could be an elevator to the third floor if the third floor is all ranch style.
Chris Nelson gave us a long talk about, the market doesn't require that for his target.
Market's changed.
Yeah. He hasn't been back to ask for approval of elevators.
Okay.
Do you want us to set the public hearing?
I think we should.
Okay.
Is there someone who's, can make a motion?
George, is it for application ZZ 23-18?
Yes.
And we're setting it for July 17th?
Absolutely recommend, yes.
Okay, 7:00 PM, you need to say, and it's a zone change for a PAD?
Master plan and zone change.
Sorry, master plan. I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for July 17th, 7:00 PM, for application ZZ 23-18 of Dorset Crossing LLC, owner David Zax, application for a modification to the Dorset Crossing PAD master plan. I don't know what else I need to include in there. Okay, I'm looking for.
A second.
Yes.
Second.
Diane, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
We'll see you in July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we not meeting on July 3rd, are we?
No.
Correct, no, because of holiday. Somebody caught that on the calendar, I'm just saying.
The buildings are.
Over here.
Okay.
Look at our schedule because we did take some of those dates like July 3rd.
Oh, and make them a Wednesday, that's right.
Make them a Wednesday.
That's right.
But I don't think we did that.
Okay.
Did not, you meet once in July and once in August, or zero times in August. And then leave early September.
That is fine, fine with me.
Okay, next order of business is the food truck regulation discussion.
We revised, we revised the draft framework based upon what we thought we heard from the commission as well as the stakeholders at your May first meeting. So the draft, and I apologize, I really intended to send structure, but I didn't. What the draft does is it changes from the original, it says that mobile, mobile vending units can be placed at existing locations that have food, that have a food and beverage operation, restaurant, bar, et cetera. So we took out that you could go anywhere that there's an existing commercial use. So that, that's really the primary change. We also made some changes to the, the conversation about allowing exceptions for private use and single payer, which was also brought up.
I like that.
By the commission. So if somebody, somebody has a party and invites one and does that, or if, you know, the CEO is bringing a mobile unit to, to the office for lunch for people to buy from, that's, that's not always exactly a single payer, but it is a private use, it's not open to the public.
Right.
So that's, that's what we tried to do, we tried to cover those bases. I don't know that it's perfect, but I certainly think it's, it's probably ready at least to go to public hearing and have that discussion.
Feedback, yeah.
My, remember my concern was, and I'm just looking at it now again, with regard to like your brewery, breweries or something like that, so that we don't exclude the, the option of having a food truck in that particular use.
So we, so we added in number one, mobile vendor use is accessory to a permitted principally use for food and beverage service establishment. So maybe we make a change before we even go that better defines that, is that what you're asking? That's what we intended, that's what we intended, that's what we meant, to allow for that.
So in other words, conceivably, a restaurant under that could have another food truck on their premises, not that they likely would, but with that wording, that, that would be allowed as well, so, I don't know. Millwrights wanted to bring in a separate food truck.
Maybe we could think about just, just the maximum one per parcel or.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just thinking it through, that's all. Yeah. I mean, I don't really see that being an issue, but.
No, I think that's an improvement.
I think it is too.
One vehicle at a time.
Yeah.
Unless it's a larger scale event.
But I think that private events are covered separately.
So it's, I mean, you hate to use individual examples, but, and we do understand that, for instance, a place like Talbot Mountain Collective has multiple food trucks on kind of big band weekends, and so, not sure I have a solution for that. And that's, you know, I think that's maybe why we didn't put the minimal.
Well, Ferg was the one that brought that up in our meeting and he brought up the collective specifically to that, that they need that and they do have the population that supports it.
And I thought the fact that they had a kitchen was kind of there, even though, I mean.
Which, which makes.
That kind of, kind of is their little loophole to get in on that.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, maybe it's part of the review process. So we have proposed this, and if somebody wanted to do one on their restaurant site, we think it's probably good for business to allow that to be shown on the site plan and have staff approve it. That's what staff thinks. But if it is more complicated than that, maybe if you get into one or two or three or four, that maybe that's something that ought to come to the full commission for a site plan approval. That way you get to review it and you might say, maybe three is too many or four is too many. It just gets complicated if you try to take individual properties.
Right, right.
As extraordinary examples.
What does this say that? Under uses, it appears that, as Bruce said, you could have more than one.
It does, it says that today.
Yeah, that seems, that seems okay for the situations that I envision here.
Well, I think to some extent, it's some self-regulating because.
Okay.
These guys need a certain amount of business or they don't, they're not going to come.
Right. That's exactly right.
And if we're, we're talking about, you know, also about the parking, I just saw, then, you know, you can't have 10 trucks if it takes up all your parking lot, you know, so.
There's, there's language in there about obstructing traffic.
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Yeah, dropping below the minimum required, group does that, so that's language, I think is good language.
I think we're good.
I think it's pretty comprehensive.
I, I just would raise, I was thinking about this as I looked at this, and it's not exactly the same thing, but, you know, we had heard in the last time we, when we were talking about the Millwrights deal and the investor in the rental properties next door on West Street was, took advantage of the opportunity to raise her concern about the smelly smoke coming from something. I didn't know if it was coming out of the truck.
That's what they were saying.
Is there another device there with their.
Smoker.
As well.
The smoker is not a truck, smoker is a type of grill. So they have, but they don't have any special consent or approval that we gave them to be. using a smoker outdoors that's irritating the neighbor.
Well, you know, there are, there are food trucks that have pizza ovens in them.
Yeah.
There are food trucks that have barbecue, pig barbecue setups.
Well, I was wondering if the Health District licensing and inspections call for some sort of filtering. So if the thing was inside the truck, the exhaust would be filtered like it was a restaurant, you know?
Would have to be taken down to the emissions test.
I don't know, how do they do that with restaurants? I don't know anything about running a restaurant.
Just kidding.
The only guy I know passed away over the weekend, and he had a service today for FERC, but, um, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
So, I think that if, if the food truck can be the source of smoke and irritation to the neighbors, you know, we're going to hear about this, because we're going to get licenses out. More people are going to invest in these trucks and come into Simsbury, you know, that as soon as they see the framework.
But really, I mean, only place where I envisioned coming, people coming into town are the supposed brewery that I get to hear where it's going, just for the record, and Talbot Mountain. I mean, other than that-
Performing arts.
Oh, and performing arts, okay, yeah, so I, I feel like that's already there. But yeah, in other words, everybody else, you can only have your own truck, so, you know, I don't see a lot of new people coming in, except for those two, I mean, and Talbot Mountain's already doing it, so it's not like a new, anyway, I'm just saying, I don't see a ton of new people coming in necessarily. Some, you know, there's going to be turnover, but it's, I don't, I don't think there's going to be huge flocking of, of food trucks, I guess, is my point.
So, let's, let's set a public hearing date for this and get it on the docket to discuss.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Is there an application? It's just for food truck?
No, so there's, there's not, you remember, how we usually do things, we develop the language and then you direct staff to put an application together and set it, set a hearing date. So it'll have a number.
So can we just direct you to do that, and we don't have to make a, do we need to make a motion?
I guess you don't.
That's what I'm asking.
Should, should make a motion-
Okay.
to set the public hearing date.
Diane's going to do it, you can tell.
Go ahead.
Oh, all right. I move to set the public hearing to discuss the mobile food vendor text amendment to July 17th?
Yep.
At 7:00 PM?
Main meeting room.
Main meeting room. Or wherever the location winds up being.
I think we'll do it here.
Okay.
Don't put where it is.
Okay, then that's fine, I'll just say July 17th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
At our regular meeting.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay, we have five, nothing, it passes. Okay. And we have a letter from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, it's such a letter from the Conservation Commission. Everybody got it?
Yep.
Yes, we did, okay.
Yep.
So, during the, I mean, essentially during the vessel application, I think we can be clear about it, the Conservation Commission, you know, talked about whether they, whether there was an ability to hire third-party reviewers. Sometimes it's almost special to the Conservation Commission, staff usually doesn't have a soil scientist on, on staff, and so there have been occasions-
You could.
where communities have paid for a third-party to review the applicant's materials. We have that regulation in the town of Simsbury code for a complex application, and it applies to zoning commission, the planning commission, zoning board appeals, and, and Conservation Commission, but it has a threshold.
Yep.
It has a minimum threshold of, and a definition for what a complex application is. It says a complex application is any application that has 100,000 square feet or 200 space, it says.
Yep.
And so, the Conservation Commission, their position is that for them, a complex application could have lots of different definitions, and a 10-acre site with a small project could be complicated for them or complex because of where it fits within the flood plan or the wetland or any of those kinds of things. So they, they drafted a letter to send to the Board of Selectmen, because this is found in our town code, not in our zoning regulations or anywhere else, with that, with a recommendation that they would like to really remove the requirement of the threshold. And I, I recommended to them, to Marjorie, because it affects, it has potential. I thought that zoning commission would be interested in their letter as well as the planning commission. So I forwarded along to you, I, I don't expect action or anything, I just thought you would want to know that they're, they're going to make that request of the Board of Selectmen.
At the next meeting?
No, we're not, we're not ready to do that.
Okay.
Do you recommend that we draft a similar letter from the zoning commission?
I think you have to, I, I mean, I'm not sure what the original reason for the threshold was.
Well, what, what was the date on the adoption of that?
Ms. Elliot, I don't, I don't remember it, I'd have to go back and-
It was back, I think, when I was on the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I can remember distinctly when we were trying to come up with a PAD, and it was a arm wrestling, you know, meeting after meeting, that the Chamber of Commerce had a strong opinion on a provision to that extent, because the zoning commission, the issue for the zoning commission was, when you look at it, a PAD, it's a complex thing to begin with, the bigger it is, the more complicated it is, why do you have a threshold on it? Because you don't know how big it's going to be, but it can be huge. And it's not in the PAD regulation, so you know how persuasive it is.
There was a lot of discussion at the time, and that threshold was put in to make sure that it was a big project.
Right.
And that developers wouldn't be held up every time they came up-
Concerned about abuse, abuse in the review process, I understand.
I don't know, I, I haven't polled my colleagues, but I feel like the residents of Simsbury got short-changed on representation in the vessel process of all those meetings. Wish it had an attorney here, that's my opinion, who knew something about dealing with 8-30G in a successful way in other towns, other communities. And, I mean, nothing will change my opinion on that, it's water over the dam, but I think we should have had an attorney here. And I think back to when the people in Canton were dealing with Greenberg and Company and their interest in exploding and removing half the mountain over there, they had all sorts of support, technical support, consultants, and yada, 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 and attorneys, and it, it's just not the same. Our approach isn't the same, I don't know if we're saving money, but I'm not sure that the outcome would have been, maybe it would have been the same as it was, that the application would have been turned down, I'm speaking of the vessel thing. I think it was deserving of being turned down, as I've said, when we were discussing that particular issue, but I don't know if we could have organized the, the motion to deny with more detail, or, I'm just suggesting, I don't know. But, and along the way, I personally was, I, I thought it was offensive that the attorney for the applicant so frequently was giving us legal advice on what the law says and what the law allows, that he could have been stopped because he was sort of off track. He wasn't about the application at hand, he was about the statutes. And we have our own, we have an obligation in the town code to use the town attorney. We can't go anywhere for legal advice other than the town attorney, unless there's some separate action, so. But, so we can't really accept his advice anyway, but I think he probably knew that, so.
But that's our opinion, I mean, you know, I, I agree with it, but we just have to sit and listen.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's a date here, it says this was added, 9/10/2007. Yeah, so you have that, so we know, it's for, it's been some time since it was added. So, there's no, no action for us to take at this point?
No, there's not, there's, there's not any action, it's not, you know, we haven't-
Since that we can endorse the action that they have set in motion.
You do that for sure.
Yeah, like rather than, do we need to write our own letter, or can we just say, like, like Bruce said, we endorse this and encourage the Board of Selectmen to take it up?
A favorable decision.
I would endorse this.
I think, I think the real question would be, the, maybe the tactical question would be, would, would you be in favor of reducing or otherwise removing the, the maximum threshold?
Yes.
That's the question.
Yes, and I like the way they worded it.
No, I'm not in favor.
Okay.
Because that's the question.
That's okay.
They, so they removed the threshold for themselves, essentially, they, their, their, their kind of strike through just says for them, a complex, a complex application is determined by the Conservation Commission. Yours would still apply i- i- if that language doesn't change. Again, we haven't drafted any board, you know, we haven't drafted any town code changes at all. We haven't gotten that far, we haven't gotten authorization to do it.
So some of us endorse this letter.
Some of us does, and some of us don't.
Right, but I don't know how to forward that to Board of Selectmen.
Well, you have to, well, when you speak, you have to speak as a body. And if you, if you can't speak as a body, then, then you wouldn't be forwarding anything.
You have to make a motion and vote it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to invite, to vote on who endorses this letter to be sent to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Further discussion?
Well, it doesn't speak to the zoning commission, so it needs to be revised so that it extends that elimination to the zoning commission too. That's really what they're asking for, for the Conservation Commission.
Well, there is, um, here, for purpose of this section, large and complex, shall be meant, shall mean a land development project for the planning commission or zoning commission which has cumulative proposed new construction of the, of the, or a project for the, deems complex.
That's, that's the difference.
So, okay, so they're saying, in this section A there, they're saying, status quo, unless it's in front of us, and then we can deem it as complex.
Yes.
Okay, so we would have to rechain, reword, do the wording, yeah, okay, sorry.
Or you could just receive the letter and talk about it later, or put it on a future agenda.
It's not something we have to act on at the moment.
I think it deserves a little more.
Yeah, we put it on an agenda.
I think the consensus is that we should respond, we should be in this.
Yeah.
And that we should get-
But we should maybe talk about it.
Some sort of reduction.
We can put it on a future agenda.
Put it on our agenda.
For the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
It's the next meeting.
There's one more in June, yeah.
One more in June. You could-
It's the 19th.
Edit it to be inclusive of the zoning and planning commissions or-
I'll do that.
Right.
And we can decide then whether it's four to one or not.
I'll do that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah. We can endorse it then, Dave.
I may change my mind, that's right.
There you go. It's your prerogative.
All right.
Were you going to give us updates?
Updates.
I do have a number of updates tonight. Yes, the Alpikin, in the 446 Hot Meadow Street 830G site plan application, has filed and appealed the zoning commission's decision on that date of May 15th. And staff will work with the town attorney, and the commission has appropriate on the matter.
Cool. Figured it was going to happen.
Yeah, but, that's, that's the update. The planning commission will host their second public meeting on the draft POCD, that will, the plan of conservation and development, that will be on Tuesday, June 27th at 7:00 PM at the library. You'll, you'll, you'll get a flop, you'll get a beat.
What's the date?
Tuesday, I said July, Tuesday, June 27th, 7:00 PM at the library, it's their regular meeting night that Tuesday. Just keep your eye out for a flyer.
And that's turned to a public hearing, or is that?
So that's not a, it's not the formal public hearing, that won't occur until the fall.
What is it?
Their second meeting, where we're going to, we're going to release the draft in the next week, give a presentation on the draft and any changes, and take feedback.
Okay. So the meeting is about the presentation and feedback?
Yes. If you, if you, Mr. Chairman was here earlier, but we have received an application for 1, 2, 6, 3, Hot Meadow Street, the redevelopment of the Wagner Ford site. That was, they did go as a kind of a preliminary introduction to DRB tonight, we were thinking that, that at least need to be a DRB for at least two meetings, but they, they have submitted last week, and therefore will schedule a public hearing for your June 21st meeting on, on that site redevelopment. Special exceptions for two restaurants and a maximum coverage exception over the 40% of the district. So you'll see that on the 21st.
So when's that going to be ready for, I mean, assuming that it unfolds-
When's that going to be?
For a public hearing?
On the 21st of, of this month, in two weeks, you'll see it in two weeks.
21st is a Wednesday.
The Wagner Ford property.
Yes, your meeting on the 21st, that's your regular meeting.
But it's all three buildings?
I'm going to add these things, I wait for the agenda.
So Juneteenth is Monday, we're not, we can't have Monday, I think the town is open, but meetings are not.
Got you.
So, you're, you're, it is a regular meeting because you approved that date, we have approved the calendar. So, yeah, Wednesday, the 21st.
We're too clever for ourselves.
We are.
Okay, so the, the, the last update item, I just wanted to bring to your attention, because I think we should do some work on it, because we really kind of, kind of figured this out over the last couple of months. Public notice, we, we find that, that our public notice requirements for all of our various land use applications are not entirely consistent at all, and I think we all think we do some certain things, but they're not, they're not reflected in our code. Like for, for special exceptions, for instance, we do not have a zoning regulation written that says we notify butters or place signs on our, on the property.
We used to.
It's not, it's not in your, it's not in your zoning-
We removed it.
I don't know.
So, so I would like to at least have a, a discussion again to make sure we, I'm on the same page with, with, with the zoning commission in terms of how and when and why you want to notify adjacent property owners, or not. I think that's important, because it is a little, a little confusing, even the center zone requires a sign sometime for a site plan. Just want to make sure that, we're going to give you a matrix and walk you through it, just to make sure that we, we, we're doing what, what the zoning commission wants, again, under state law for special exceptions and, and, and zone changes. The minimum requirement is, is just to notify, you know, to legally advertise in the newspaper, and there's two times, and the statute allows us to do additional, but it is not required, whether it's a butters or whether it's signs. I just, I'd like to, I'd like to walk you through that, and I want to just be on the same page.
Thank you.
We, so when is that?
So I can, I, if you're, whenever you want to do it, if you're, I'd like to do it sooner than later.
Can we do it on the 21st?
Well, I think the clearer-
Yes.
The issues are, the list of, here are the items, here's the discrepancy, and some recommended action.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we've done most of that work, we're kind of ready. So we want to hit you with it, yeah, so we have-
It's been hanging around for a long time.
I've got a long list of things we're trying to get to, and that's one of them that I think is important.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we're going to, I'll wait till it comes up. I was going to say, if we hit a classic case of that house, not in a road.
Anybody else?
Do you want us to return? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, just real quick, I mentioned to these guys just in passing, and I'm just curious to get your opinion or everybody's opinion, but it had been brought up by a couple of different people after all of the last few meetings, but whether we want to consider doing a moratorium on further residential development until we get a, a real plan of attack for affordable housing moving forward, so that we don't find ourselves in these positions? And I'm curious if that's something we'd want to consider, if we need to put that on, on an agenda, I don't know, just-
So interesting, I guess it's within your purview to, to do a moratorium on residential projects, but you cannot put a moratorium on an 830G affordable housing-
No.
-application.
No, but we could do a moratorium, especially while the-
Until we get more points.
On everything else.
Right, and while the POCD is being-
But you'd still be subject to an 830G application.
That's okay.
Okay.
I mean, I, I guess, I took to heart that a lot of people are like, you don't really have a plan, and, and we do have a plan, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not probably as familiar with the plan, I guess, maybe let's make sure we have a plan and it's clear, and we just, you know, and just kind of, I don't know, just, I know there's a lot on the books that we can't touch, it's, it's in profit-
Right, it's been approved.
But, you know, if there's anything we can do to kind of make sure that we are ahead of it.
And thoughtful.
Well, the plan of conservation, and also, I believe the planning commission has done the required affordable housing plan.
Right.
We're one of the few towns that submitted it.
But are we following it?
Well-
Let's talk about it.
We can talk about it, but I, I'm really hesitant to do moratoriums on residential development, holy God.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we do a, I mean, the POCD is revising some of that stuff literally right now in terms of our approach to residential development, but there's no reason I can't walk you through what the POCD says, what we, where we've, where we think that our plans do direct- But there's no reason I can't walk you through what the P O C D. says, what we, where we've, where we think that our plans do direct residential development. So we, we can.
Well, can we put that on the agenda to maybe just talk it through?
Yeah.
That'd be great, and then see, it just, you know, I, I just, yeah.
Yes.
I've said it, that's it, yeah, that would be great.
That's what you want, of course.
Yeah, thanks, assuming, you know.
Oh, that's okay.
Folks are in agreement, yeah.
Diane. I am.
Okay, anybody else?
Thank you, Diane.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you, George, we just gave you more work to do, sorry.